Nation of the Republic for wishes stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so. For the order of business, proclamation approval of the agenda, so is there a motion to approve the agenda that has been placed before you? Come on. It's all in favor, right? Or do you wanna? I'm all in favor of accepting the agenda as presented. Okay, welcoming our visitors. Well, it looks like we have the baby and the babysitter. And that's good, you can come all the time. So welcome, Michael and Dave, it's awesome to have you here. And then Mr. Lynch is here. We're missing. This Mr. Dobiz, he's got a game, so maybe it must have been rescheduled, is it rescheduled? Okay, so. The first order of business under organization for the twenty four, twenty five. Organization of the board is to administer the oath of office to our two newly elected board members. They're required to take the oath, but in the past, we've all, I'll take an oath, so I have it there in front of you. So Shannon will be administering the oath to the school board members.
We all want to stand. I do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of North Dakota. And then I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the school board member of the Oaks Public School District number forty one. According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you. And welcome, past board member, Hi, what? New board member, Kelly, or I, Patty Jo Carlson. So let's move on to item two B, election of officers. I included policy BDA, which outlines the duties of the board officers, just so everybody to know ahead of time what is expected of the president. Also, the vice president, and one thing just added under vice president, is that you will be tracking the meeting minutes from be legendary. In that job. So we'll start out with school board president, which will be elected first, and once it is filled, then I will hand that over to the new president for the rest of the year, for the rest of the school year, so. Um, do I have any nominations, or does anybody want to bring any nominations forth for school board president for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five Oaks Public School? Okay, we have a nomination of Sheila Nagel. On my floor, I'm nominating Monica Heinbut. Are there any other nominations? And now what am I doing with this? Okay, any discussion, thank you.
Can I say the right?
Yes, I wish that's correct, yes you can. You're welcome. Alright, so we have one nomination down the floor after. Board member Nagel declined the nomination, so it is. Any other discussion?
Second.
Hopefully I'm doing this all correct. Sounds good so far. And then I suppose it's a roll call vote.
Alright, Patty Jo Carlson. Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Ryan Sayer. Monica Heinbut. Motion passes five to zero.
And at this point, I'll hand the board, came over to our new president of the board, Monica Heinbut.
Alright, so I would entertain a motion for vice president nominations.
I nominate Sheila Nagel.
Any other nominations? Are there any other? No? I am with the motion, the nomination seat. Shannon.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
A second.
I'll take the roll call. Patty Jo.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Ryan Sayer. Monica Heinbut.
Yes. Alright, Sheila Nagel will be our new vice president. For today, I will continue with time tracking, and after that, I will be having to. Alright, so we are going to move on to our student outcome goals, our goals and guardrails. The first is goal progress monitoring, goal number two, math. Alright, so this month, our goal progress measures are from math, and. Everybody knows that it is that we're going to increase the percentage of students who are proficient or above in grades three through eight, grade ten. As measured by the North Coast State Assessment from forty eight percent in spring twenty twenty three to eighty percent in spring twenty twenty. So looking at our annual targets, fifty five percent is our annual target that we have for this year, and I'll be reporting that to you. In September, I believe, is the month that we will be reporting math back, but. We will have all of the data back, it's not official from the state, so I don't really want to throw that out there yet, because I know there will be changes. In the past, the numbers that we've had, we've reported for our NDSA have gone up. Because, you know, kids that move in, kids that move out, so the numbers generally go up, but I don't want to say that and have it not, so we won't say anything officially about that, but. If you look at goal progress measure two point one, those, that's for K through two learners on Star Math, where fifty percent of above are above. Now, we were expecting the drop, because we looked at our years past, and I explained that in my notes that I made to you. That we were looking that it was going to change, or that it was going to drop, and so, you know, we talked about it, and Mr. Lynch and myself, and. Mr. Dobiz, we were teachers, you know, we made aware of that stuff, and, you know, having conversations, setting goals. Trying to fight that decline in scores, and by golly, we did it, I mean, we, we ended up not losing ground. If you can see on two point one, we were far exceeded our target, and. We even went up above there, so the kids in K through two, or the learners did really, really well on that assessment, and the teachers did great job preparing them. Okay, the same. But two, we didn't meet our target close, we got on close to it, um, but the kids. Look at the increase that they had from the fall to the spring, so they had great growth. We just did not meet that, that goal that we had set for ourselves. It was pretty high in the spring, it was seventy five percent. I fully expect that we'll make it, because we're more aware of it now, right? We're looking at our data, and we're saying, we don't want this to happen, so we're having those conversations. We're, we're looking at our interventions, we're looking at how, we're looking at science of math, you know, some of those things that. I had pointed out on what's next for us. I had a conversation with a man that we're going to be meeting, like I'm talking about the science of learning, and so we'll start to even focus this more on math. You know, some of our teachers have done that, they're doing the train, the trainer. Mr. Schneider and Ms. Sheeler went this, they just went. To do the training for the science of math, and looking at, you know, planning the year out with units, so. And that knowledge will be shared within the staff on that. And like I said, we'll have final NDSA, but I, we just, I mean, even though we didn't hit our target, we saw growth, and that, you know, that's really important, and I think that. We will hit our target for next year. Goal progress measuring two point three, we were at sixty three percent, and we did not drop again first, so this was, we just met our target. But, you know, you can look at, two years ago, our scores had dropped, but hopefully we're on that trend to, you know. Make ourselves climb back up again, again, becoming aware of stuff. Our teachers are using freckle as their intervention, we're looking at our data more. We're gonna, going to be spending time next year in our PLCs, looking at data, using our data, making sure that. Yes or by valley, and I think if we're being more honest with ourselves, you know, looking at where we're at, I think our teachers are looking at it with more honesty, and. You know, it's, sometimes it's not easy to take when you're saying, you know, we need to, we're not doing well, we need, we need to do something different in order to turn that trend up, so. Jordan, did you have anything that you wanted to add from, you know, doing a little BDA?
Just kind of like some of the questions that you guys posed, like the difference between the star and the NDSA, like that's the big discrepancy there, so that's just something like, we need to look at and see, okay. What, what's different between the NDSA and the star? It looked like our star, like our kids are doing well, but then you get the NDSA results back, and it looks a little bit different there, but. When I saw myself look at them, like across the state, that whole rate was low as well with that one. So it's just going to see like, hey, what can we do on our part, we'll see what changes can we make? And to see if, or to start aligned with NDSA, is that what we're going to do, and knowing that we have the NDSA plus. To go off of next year, like that should align more with our NDSA anyway, so that's going to be a good, probably a more accurate representation of. Right, where our kids at, what, how well are we performing here?
You know, if you remember, right, our reading scores on star were higher than, or no. Were lower than the NDSA, but then our math was it, so somewhere we're missing something, some standards that, that, yeah.
Both are like, it's certain standard, that's really not going to match.
And that's the thing where like, we can look at and see like, alright, we have algebra geometry and algebra two, maybe it's like. On algebra two, if that's going to be the heavy hitter there, because that seemed to be kind of the common theme there, and so just kind of taking a look and see what can we do. Just better prepare our kids, I guess, this is kind of like, let's say you go into the ACT. Sometimes as a, like you take it as a sophomore, you're not exposed to it as like you would be a junior going through. Seeing algebra, I've seen geometry, if you don't see geometry, you're not getting prepared for that, well, the ones that do see it, they're. Get that, so they wait.
The order of classes has been talked about so many times over the years, and it's changed, you know, before it was algebra one, algebra two, geometry. Now we're algebra one, geometry, algebra two, because we knew that our kids needed that geometry piece of it, and. Then we did some switching in order of classes, it's also been talked about just having a math one, math two, math three, math four. And putting those standards, you know, because we know that certain standards go together, but I, I mean, talking to Mr. Schneider and Ms. Sheeler, you know. Talking about, okay, so what algebra skills do they have to be successful in geometry? But when you go into geometry, you don't use all of your algebra skills, because you only have to use some of the algebra skills, so. Yeah, it's, it's hard to know, you know. Which standards do you focus on in order to, I think it will be a lot better with NDSA plus, right? With the A plus, because we're going to have that formative assessment throughout the year, it's going to be in line with the summative at the end of the year, so we'll do that three different times. And hopefully it will pick out for us, that assessment will pick out, say, okay, you know, your kids don't know how to do this standard. And they're going to be tested on it in the spring, so then our teachers can make some adjustments in their, their class order, or what units they're teaching, and. I, it'll be, I think it'll be a lot more informative for our teachers, because when you think about it, we're doing star, which is a multiple choice test, and then, well. NDSA is two, to a point, there's writing in it, and there's, you know, so. And you can dig a little bit deeper in star, but they don't necessarily. Totally align with what we're doing with our NDSA and its quota, even though they say star is predictive, and it's like seventy five or eighty percent, so it should be. But it's a matter of just digging down deeper, and we're also going to be doing our PLCs, we're going to have to start digging deeper into those standards, just to see, but. Are aware of this, and they, they know that, they know it's ahead of them, like that PD they were doing, I think, right, so they're planning units, so they're looking at our data. And he and Liz have already started writing their units, that they're aligning with the standards, and making sure that they're encompassing all of those processes. In order to make sure that our kids are the best prepared that they can be, because, and we know. Our change in behavior affects for our kids, right, our kids can keep going on, and until we do something here, change it for them.
With the A plus, will the results be quicker than they have been in the past?
Uh, we'll get the results, and before it is, just how do we interpret it? And even still with the high school, when we last met at the end of May. They said like, we're still, we need more data for the high school side of it, so, I mean, we can get it back and just see, alright, well, based on these scores. What can we assume, it's like, where are these kids at? But until, I mean, NDSA, like the state dictates what is proficient, what is advanced, what is, I mean. What those categories are going to be, we don't really know for sure. But they say they just need to get a few more data points, and they can hopefully tie that down. They said it's easier for the elementary, because like, okay, you can get this here, this is the common theme, where the high school sometimes, it's just all over, it's just don't know.
So NDSA is really actually very quick on their turnaround. Like, I can tell you how your boys did, or how your kids did on the NDSA, what they don't do well in, what standard. Not necessarily each individual standard quite yet, because we haven't gotten that, that piece back, but. I can tell you that our kids did not do well in algebra, or didn't do well in geometry, or writing word problems, and it's the same way for NDSA math, or NDSA reading. We can tell you that right away, this, this score has come back fairly quickly from that. But the A plus should line up, right, so we're not taking one. Right, trying to fit it together with the, a different kind of assessment, so, you know, that this will all line up. It'll lead to the somebody who's like that half, so. I'm excited to see how it helps us, and the fact that we're making time in order to analyze. And that one, they're going to take three things? Three times, they take it in the fall, and then in the winter, and then in the spring, so. I, I feel like we're a step ahead, because we took the, yeah, we took, we did a lot of assessing this year, right, but our kids have seen platform. They know what it looks like, they know what to expect, they know what to watch for. On step, yeah, yeah, and I'm great enjoying to spend time in those classrooms, and there were really good conversations, like even when they were taking that test. It was like, okay, wait, that question was asked differently than we thought it was going to be asked, it was like, instead of building it up, it was tearing it down, so. You got to see how the questions work, so there was mental notes to the teachers, like, I gotta go and teach this differently to the kids, because that's asking them to be able to do that. You know, I don't know, that's a really good question, it's very, very expensive, and we've had this conversation, because we spend like thirty thousand dollars a year on. Renaissance products, and they're, they're good for us, right, and we've been using them, not to their full capability, so that's why we're doing PD on them this fall, but. I hope someday that we find that the NDSA plus formative is just a lot better predictor for us, so we don't have to do star. We can, you know, move over to using A plus, because that obviously is paid for, you know, we don't have to pay for it, so.
Is Norbert Joss uses star?
Um, you know, I don't know, I don't know what they use for their.
Yeah, no, a lot of schools like to tie in the AR piece of it. So I'll say right now, we're just not ready, maybe more just be that, we can't do that yet, but it's still another tool that we're able. Get that piece back right away, but like she said, like eventually, it comes to the part where the state is offering that to us, and it's. They offer, some of their resources are very similar to what Renaissance does, so then we can just adopt that.
Well, and as we do well, the state does well, right, so the state wants us to do well, they want to be able to hand us tools and. Things that we can use in order for our kids to do well, because that's a reflection on, you know, the whole, this whole state and how our kids are doing, so. They want us to do well, so they're always trying to find things for us, you know, they're helping us, and they really do listen. Well to the schools, they listen to the administrators, you know, and try to help as much as possible, not just give us stuff that beats time and money. And well, I'd just like to tell you guys all, thank you, you and Jordan, and. Right, and all the teachers for all the work that you put in, obviously. Yeah, it was fun to see this, it was fun to see that data, because you don't, you know, we. Always super anxious to see what it looks like, but it was really fun to see it, because it's like, ah. I know Sue was still a little teary eyed when I met with her, a couple days after the last point meetings. She's very, she's pretty proud of her first start. Do you want me to?
Well, that's right, we have to. Well, I don't think you have to accept the guardrails, I could be wrong, according to the agenda. So should we do the whole progress for just the goals first, should we do that?
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion here to accept the goal progress monitoring report for our goal number two, ma'am. Well, it's goal number two.
Second.
Fire seconds. All those in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? The report has been accepted, we'll move on to the superintendent guardrail progress monitoring for guardrail number two, effective instruction. Okay, I won't, I spend a ton of time, because this is just our baseline, so. I also adjusted the guardrail progress measure that this week got him, so. Progress measure two point one is the educators that score at least at a level three or above on Empower PD. On our PD that we just purchased, so our baseline is twenty seven percent, and element one A is that they use proficiency scales in their classroom, and this was just a self-reported. Okay, so they had to do the self-evaluation, so. You can see that eleven percent of the elementary educators self-report that they're at a level three, and forty two percent of the junior high, high school educators self-report, there's. There's going to have to be more time spent on understanding, a level three means that, so that the. The proficiency scales are being used, not just by the teachers, but also by the students. So the students have to be using them on a day-to-day basis, and I think that forty two percent might be a little bit high. So next year, we'll be getting deeper into it, I went up to the Northern Cass Institute, and. I went to a presentation by. Dr. Phil Warwick, and he's from Marzano, and he. All about proficiency scales, and start, you know, where you start to build your. Use of individualization and PCBL in your classrooms, and start to get really solid, and he's, he really believes that you've got to go back to those proficiency scales, so. We have already scheduled him to come in on our PD day in October, and, or virtually. And also this summer, so that we can get ourselves to that point, I really, one of my goals is that we become a higher liability school with Marzano. That's my long-term goal, and we've talked a little bit about it, and it might not come to fruition, but. I believe if we start to do all of those things right, we've been doing PCBL for, what, starting our seventh year now. If we start to go back and look and start to do those pillars that we need to do correctly, and we start to learn, and make sure that all of our new teachers have it. That we will be able to move forward in that, so. Oh, I have been admitted that from Dr. Warwick, but we started building these six years ago, and. Some teachers, we have them, right, but are we using them fully in their classrooms? We're not, we know that, I mean, this is a pretty low baseline, right? We'll, we'll, we'll start to move up from that, because the great thing about the guardrails. Like I said, when I was custom be legendary, when we first started it, and all the time, I mean, it's helped us to totally get focused. We're having, we're not, we're having conversations about like, what are we going to do for PD this fall, what should we, you know, pulling things out, no, we know what we want to do. And using proficiency scales is one of those things, and we have the data now to show that we need to do that. The other one was teachers using those student-centered assessments, at least to build on each other, right? You've got your proficiency scales, and then you start to look at where your kids are on your scales, and then you start to build your assessments off of that on all of the standards, so they're going to go hand in hand. Same thing, Dr. Warwick, he'll be working with this on it, and we'll be focusing on those. Developing the scales and the student-centered assessment, so again, the numbers are. Reported, right, you know, you have, everybody's along the gap, some think, boy, I'm not doing that, and they probably are, and some are saying, yeah, I'm doing it, and they really aren't, so. Once the principals start going in there specifically looking for those, because we're spending the money, we're spending the time. On making sure that our teachers have the professional learning in order to do well on these things, it, it becomes part of our evaluation, so. The principals will be looking for that mentoring, hoping to move us along, so. And guardrail two point three is turning in the lesson plans that meet all of the requirements. Yeah, you have, I'll have some great questions about like, are they required to turn in lesson plans? Yes, we started to require that they turn in lesson plans. The difference between a higher percentage is that they're not, they're probably not complete, and betting they probably don't have level of rigor on there, you know, those three things that they need is to have. They're missing some of those components, again, that'll go back to next year, here's our focus, this is what you're required to have. You have to have these three things, so we have to provide the professional learning for them, and. And it comes back to us, we have, we know what our problems are, we know where our gaps are, we need to start providing metal, the teachers, I fully expect that this will go up, I'm excited for. Because I, we are going to see instruction improve as we start to focus on these things, and our personalization is going to expand very, very quickly, our, our skill at doing personalization. Jordan, do you have anything you want to think?
Nope, and that's more part of it, like, was that, using Empower. Using Empower, I mean, then you can see everything right there, it also shows the scales, and I know. Mrs. McGuire does a great job of like. Giving the students the scale, hey, this is what it is, and even like, using Empower, that she did a fantastic job of just kind of. Just venturing on, just trying it and seeing what we had there, so.
And so Empower will both encompass our professional learning and where we're at in our growth. And then also for the kids, you know, everything will be on there, every, you will be able to grab your kids' Empower, and you'll be able to see exactly what they're. Where they're at in their learning, if it's not in there, we have a problem, right, and that'll be something that our principals are going to have to take care of, that the teachers are using that, so. This year, we gave them the choice of turning in written lesson plans, I don't know why anybody would want to, but some chose to do that, and then also using Empower. But as soon as they are a lot better with using Empower, that, it, it's just going to become natural, because your progressions are going to be on there, your proficiency skills will be there, your assessments are on. All in line. Did you have a question, Rhonda?
No. Just taking notes.
Okay, so according to the agenda, we need to accept this report, so I'm looking for a motion to accept the superintendent order of progress monitoring for real number two. Fire most, is there a second? Nagel seconds, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed?
Madam President, just for a point of clarification for your new board members. I love the term that you're using, accept these reports as versus approve these reports. When a board approves something, they take, they take ownership of, of the report. And by accepting the report, you're just acknowledging that your superintendent has been providing you the information. Regarding the guardrails and goals that you have accepted as a board, I just want to make sure that. There's that point of clarification for that, do I need to expand on that anymore, or is that like, clear?
We are good, thank you, Marsha.
Alright, thank you, great. Kudos, kudos, not only to the report, but the progress that you guys have made, so, good job.
You have another proud mom over there. Okay, we'll move on to item C, community engagement ad hoc committee recommendations. Rhonda, do you want to take this and discuss what we?
Rhonda, do you want to take this and discuss what we?
Sure. I was on mute or not. So Monica and I met with Sue. And we talked about for the community engagement piece, we needed to come up. With something, obviously, to get the community involved and have a better understanding of what we're doing. So we talked about having an event. The night of the open house. And we know that's geared more towards the elementary kids, but we thought we would be able to capture those parents. So they could see what we've been working on. And then on the high school side, we would. I think we were looking at the night of the Hall of Fame induction. Because I believe is it volleyball that night, I think. And we thought that way we would. Or coronation, right. And that way we would capture, you know, a lot of people from the community, plus probably more of the parents of the high school students. So.
Yeah. So another thing that we discussed was having our, our goals on display as well as having like a one-page handout. Sue had said that they would help us do that. We thought it would be great to have all board members involved, have administration or our building principals, as well as some teachers there that. Can maybe give examples and. And show how their teaching has changed since we've implemented these, these goals. And how. How things have changed in their classroom, as well as maybe seeking out some ambassadors within the high school. So maybe on the recommendation of Mr. Lynch or. Or some of the teachers. To give us an idea of how things have changed for their learning and how. How they've seen changes happening on their side. That we've been, we've been discussing. We will meet with Sue again. In a couple of weeks here, I think.
Yeah, I think we're retalking about, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. Some of the teachers and then were we talking about like student council reps or some of the students? You know, could be present and they could explain also, you know, how they feel it's affecting them and in the. Just the, the progress with it and the changes that they've seen.
Right. So obviously, we would lean on your recent core recommendations on. Teachers or students to reach out to for that. We want it to be more of a discussion with the community. We want feedback. We want to open up lines of communication with them. Our other plan was to put a paper in the paper. Prior to these events happening to explain the legendary. How we started the process and what we've been doing throughout this. Think that covers everything, Rhonda?
Yes.
Are there any questions or comments or? Right? The Jordan and Reagan policies. Perfect. Okay, so from here, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Within the consent agenda, we have the approval of the June seventeenth regular board meeting minutes. Receive May financial reports, approve May bills, approve second reading and adoption of amended policy GAA. Curriculum design and evaluation. Approve second reading and adoption of amended policy GAC review and complaints of instruction. Approve quarter two time tracker. Appoint Anna Seale as our federal program representative. Appoint Jamie Franks as our section five oh four coordinator. Appoint Ed Wentworth as our ADA coordinator. Appoint Anna Seale as our title nine coordinator. Appoint Anna Seale as our civil rights compliance officer. Appoint Anna Seale as our Cheyenne Valley Special Education Unit Board Representative. Appoint Sheila Nagel as our Southeast Region Career and Technology Center Board Representative. Approve all board committee appointments. Prove destruction of records from twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen. Authorize the district to join the North Dakota High School Activities Association. Designate the Oak's Times as official newspaper. Designate Starian Bank, Bank North and First Community Credit Union, as well as Edward Jones as depositories. Set the regular monthly meetings of the Oak School Board as the third Friday meetings each month at seven AM at the Oak's Public School Central Office. And approve the pledge of assets June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? The moved. Ava Loester, have a second?
Second.
Fire seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? There any discussion? Okay, hearing none? This, this doesn't give a. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? That comes up to jump. It is approved. Moving on to reports in your packets who all have business managers' report. Superintendent's report, SRCTC, June board meeting minutes, SVSEU, June board meeting updates. Those are all for information. We don't need anything else. Apologies to Sue. My time tracking is going to be off tonight.
You're doing great. You're doing great.
Thanks, Marsha. Okay, so moving on to items for discussion and possible action. Item A, approved for preliminary twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget.
I don't know that it's changed. I didn't even hear it. There was, I, there was just some fine tuning that we did. We just. We just got the REAP number today and I never even got to look at it to see what the REAP, if it's changed their REAP grant income. We still don't have a title one number. And five is an estimate. They just increased our title five from last year. So. I, I can't even, I mean, I've got numbers in here from, but they're best guess from what we had last year. I started the financials today. I got all the income done and the bills paid. So I'm. I was going to start getting. The rest of the, the financials for twenty three, twenty four tied up and finished so that I can put them in the spreadsheet so we know where we actually are. I talked to Don Flaherty. Excuse me, maybe a week and a half ago, two weeks. And he still thinks that twenty three point three million is a good number for our taxable. Value. So. This budget has. The hundred and five mills that were allowed. We are also allowed by board approval to. Add in. The special assessments. And I don't know if that came after we had already submitted this.
I don't think you have.
No. No, I talked, no, because I had to contact, I contacted Sasha, the city auditor, and she said that it's. Fifty nine hundred dollars, just shy of fifty nine hundred dollars. For the specials that we will pay next year. And with board approval. We can levy those dollar amounts in addition to our hundred and five that we are allowed by century code. So that one, that came out to about point two, two mills. And so I have that on the. When we meet on July thirtieth, I'll have that as part of my. Mill levy to go to the county auditor. So, did you have the special assessments in our expenses on that, Shannon? Yes, they are on page two. Right about in the mill for four thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty six cents. So those, that was. Off of some information that I had in the old spreadsheet. And so obviously, that went up. From the, there was new, new specials that were coming. And that doesn't include. The items that are happening this year, because the project won't get done until next spring or next, next spring sometime. And then we will know what those specials are if, you know, if they're going to hit any of the school properties.
Okay, so we're at the maximum levels. There's no other hidden ones we can throw in there, is there?
Not that I'm aware of.
Our estimated eight AM is down ten roughly. What's our kindergarten looking like coming in? Twenty five, somewhere around in there, I believe, right? Yeah. What do we, which way? What are, what are we doing? We're not doing anything with it just simply because. At this point. Felt like, don't know what happens, happening to the inside. For us to fix the outside, what if, what if something happens there? Each rec fails this winter. Then we put all that money into the outside of the building. We are fixing the plumbing because we were able to get that. Twenty thousand dollars, we're able to fix that plumbing, that whole entire line. We're going to be going in there and lining it. But did you take the miscellaneous, some of the miscellaneous dollars to do that?
It was, we had to pay a ten thousand dollar down payment. So I had that in the twenty three, twenty four school year. So that's part of last year's miscellaneous. And then the other. Ten thousand dollars will be on, is part of the miscellaneous, the twelve miscellaneous mills that I have.
And what else did we use those?
The bus of a hundred and twenty three thousand. There was, we took ICS's bill of, I think we paid him eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty, I think, use that for. Uh, no, that's what we paid in twenty three, twenty four. Then there was just some odd building repairs that I put on there. And then. I did, I'm doing a journal entry to take the ninety eight thousand, I think, out of the building or of. Expenses, building expenses or maintenance expenses. To make that a zero. And, uh, yeah, yep.
Okay, so we have two bonds that we're still paying on?
We have one bond.
And that comes up in twenty five or twenty six?
I paid one already this year, so twenty four, twenty five. We'll have one more payment in twenty five, twenty six. So. Two hundred and twenty-ish thousand dollars of principal.
And James Valerian goes on.
Twenty twenty seven.
Any other questions about preliminary twenty twenty four, twenty five budget? Just comment. We got to figure out a way to fund those activities. So we've already, okay, so we're not going to have any C squad coaches this year. Trying to think of what other things that we've done for the year. We are not paying, we were trying to do little things, right? Okay, so. Yes, coaches. We are not paying for them, their membership and their professional organization. We're not paying for them to go to summer conference. You know, we're trying to just do little things that we possibly can.
Little camp, in a camps, there's, we're not paying for bus drivers. We're not paying, we're not paying, I mean. When I say that, we might, we, it might come through the school. But I take it from their dedicated accounts. So they have to fundraise to do those special things. There's boys basketball that went to, I think, Valley City and a couple of camps. If we did not pay a bus driver, I charged the mileage to the dedicated account and I charged. That was really it. They, they must have paid for any other stuff. There was no food. There's no, no coaching, no. But I did charge them bus fees. The files.
We normally pay the coaches over the summer to do weightlifting, have dedicated funds. Taking them. I mean, it's all those things. I just put the kids on all of those pieces, which work.
Do you get that many during the summer for lifting?
I haven't been in this year. In the past. Twenty five kids some cats. I mean, the fluctuation is weak by.
I mean, as they get older, they're working.
So we're trying to find just little places where we can do that, but. It, it is, it's a huge amount of money and I, the only way, I mean, we could cut our whole entire athletic budget, we'd still recruit. You know, but. Our, our next biggest thing is to cut support. And I'll have to be a decision that.
Okay, any other questions, any comments? So I'm seeking a motion to approve the preliminary twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget. Ava Loester, do I have a second?
Second.
Day seconds?
One thing I know, I put it in the packet and Q and A, but just if anybody is watching, like, so this is just the preliminary budget. We do, you have until October as a board to make changes on. And I mean, if we have to have. Special meetings, you know, I, we still have time if we have to make changes or need to. We think this is just a preliminary budget. So Shannon can start getting the levies ready to go to the counties.
And even though as we have time to change.
Yes. So I actually have that down as a special meeting on July thirtieth. Then if you guys want to be thinking more about, or if there's sort of changes that come about, you know.
Yeah, the final one is due October tenth. And hopefully at that time we'll have a little better number. That's twenty three million. If it's.
I thought every time we get a bill or something, the other day we got the wrong bill from a company that sent this and we're like, where did this come from? And we're like, just panicked, this big bill. And we ended up talking to them and they were like, oh, we sent back to the wrong school. Thank goodness, because we were in a panic.
Any other discussion on the preliminary budget? Any other discussion? We need a roll call for this, Shannon?
I think we should.
Okay, we'll take a roll call please, Shannon.
Patty Joe? Brian Sayer. Ron, Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Rod the day.
Yes.
Monica Hinebuck.
Yes. Motion passes five zero. Moving on to approval of the special assessment tax levy. Do I have a motion to approve the special assessment tax levy? Ava Loester, once again. Do I have a second? Fire seconds. Is there any discussion on this? I know you guys touched on this a little bit. Do you want to maybe just briefly describe what you put in our cover sheet there about why? Why there's the need for this special assessment and what, what will happen with money?
It's, you know, every, we're, we're given the special assessments and everybody else that lives in this school district, but at least be able to wait or recoup that, that amount of money, you know, so. This is a small amount, I think, compared to probably what it's going to be at this next project. So. We just felt it was best that, because we would have that ability at our disposal to. Acquire that levy that we probably should do that in order to make sure that we have the money that we needed.
Well, I thought I had the paperwork with me to tell you how much exactly it was, but I don't. Sorry. But I got the spreadsheets or I got spreadsheets from the county auditor or the city auditor. I think it was just under six thousand dollars.
I feel like you had that in your report.
I thought it was someplace, yeah.
I thought it was someplace, yeah. Another person here, now it's like point two.
Point two-two, I think is what it was.
Great, is there any further discussion?
Oh, no. That was the VW grant.
That's, I had that too. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Um, do we need roll call on this as well?
Rhonda Day?
Yes.
Sheila Nagel?
Yes.
Brian Sayer?
Yes.
Patty Joe?
Yeah.
And Monica Heimberg? Yes. Motion passes five zero. Um, and then our next item here is approving the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five B schedule, do I have a motion? Fire moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Day seconds?
Um, okay, uh, I have to pull this from the consent agenda, just because I feel like we're going to have questions on this and, let you explain the reasonings behind all of that, the comparisons.
Yeah, so Shannon and I have worked through the cost of lunch and breakfast and, um, we actually, the target price for the USDA for a meal is three dollars and eighty-five cents, and we're not anywhere near that, and I'm gonna, look, we have raised lunch like, like ten cents or something like that. Um, so we have, um, proposed that eight or six will be three seventy-five and then three eighty-five will be full price for the meal, is, that will meet that USDA target price of thirty-five. They're saying that the cost of the meals is going to be going up two percent next year, so the rise of food, and then also there's new requirements, um, that are gonna have, going to have to be met, so they figured that's gonna be about three cents per meal. And they said it just, that doesn't sound like a lot, when you consider how many meals that we serve, how many days during the school year, it's going to be a significant amount of money, that, um, somewhere that needs to be, you know, we have to recoup it, and in fact Shannon and I were, are, we are in rear seventy-five thousand dollars for people not paying their lunch bills at the end of the school year.
One year.
Still.
At the end of the.
We were at zero at the start of the year, because we cannot go from year to year negative. So it was at zero on Ju- July first, twenty twenty-three.
Sending out letters to families, at the end of the year, they sent out letters and, um, correspondence to all of the families, like, this is how much money that you owe. Um, in years past, we've had report cards, right, and we can say, um, we're gonna keep your report cards, even though they could print them off and just send until, you know, you're, um, but we didn't send out report cards this year, so we didn't even have that little bit of like, hey, come and get your bills paid, so, um, in August, we have asked the two carries, Anne Marie, to reach out at the beginning of August and let all the families know, hey, this is how much money that you owe, so they don't come in for open house and give us a two hundred dollar check and then they, it's already gone, and then they're in the hole. You know, trying to get families to stay up on them, they're, we get, um, if you're not in the hole, you get a letter every month. If you're in the hole, you get them every week, because I get them every week myself, I get, if I start going in the hole, right, I get emails. I might get text messages and, we try not to send out text messages, but that might just be the way that it is, because people just don't get the emails or don't pay attention to them, or, you know, and we're trying not to send persons in the mail, because what is, it's one seventy-four cents.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're at nine cents. You know, so we've got that expense that you add on, you know, if, but, um.
But let it be known that the seventy-five thousand dollars isn't all overdue lunch. We, we, we had more expenditures than we had income. But, uh, even if everybody were at zero or not in the rear stage, we still would be in the negative or in the hole in the lunch account.
Well, the subsidy. Oh, the seventy-five thousand isn't what people owe.
No, that's very low.
Say honestly, we will have to transfer from the general fund to make it zero at the end of the day. On, on June thirtieth.
So how much, how much is all that?
That I don't know, I, I just know.
But we're having the subsidized mills, which, we should, as a school, should not have these subsidizing mills. We can't afford that, I mean, we need our money to, we're taking money out of our general fund that we need to educate kids and we're subsidizing our lunch fund.
The last time I remember, it's not, we not, was during.
Yeah, we got enough, yeah.
And, honestly.
I think I looked at the budget and the budget, the budget that was approved for this year was still forty, like forty-eight thousand dollars in the hole, just.
Didn't they talk about that up in Bessemer, that just about every school goes in the hole? Lunch fund.
There's a, there's a, there's a breaking, yeah, there's a lot of them, there's a breaking point that, that, where they can kind of maintain or, you know, I've heard from some, some places that, that say, oh, no, we're, we're in positive, but they pay their wages from the general fund, so, then you're really none.
So the free every dues that everybody, you know, in a perfect world fills out each year. So the more of those that fill it out, whether they qualify or not, increases what we get for funds, right?
Yes. That'd be something that's included, like in the elementary, when they come and drop off their, like, we always fill out for the first day of pool, or the first day of school where their pool day, to not be in that pack.
Yeah, it's in there and they can still fill it out.
And there's online where they can fill it out and, you know, we try, and we can't make everybody fill it out, which, you know, it would be nice if there was a requirement to fill out this, because people would probably qualify it, that don't realize that they would qualify for it, but they, they don't fill it out, or whatever their, their personal reasons are, for filling it out.
I would think that having an online option would take away the everyone seeing, wonder how, so.
I feel like I used to never put mine out until I was told that it matters. Maybe put something in there. Because some parents don't know. Because I never qualified, but, so I never filled it out. And then I had a teacher tell me that it helps the school. And so I fill it out now, but, I mean, it was something I never did.
Um, one thing, we're not going to be having snack and juice this year to try to cut costs. Um, we're, you know, not, we're running short, one person in a backup position in the kitchen, to try to cut back on some of those costs. Um, some of our families that are unable to pay for milk and juice, that ends up filling, you know, so now there won't be milk and juice. Milk and juice, so. But we're also raising the price of the adult meals, because we are not covering the cost of that. We've been offering salads to the teachers and, um, Janessa's gonna figure out the cost of salads and then staff's gonna have to pay for the cost of the salads, not just. Computer insurance, we kept that the same, now activity participation. In the past, we've done, like, if you are in two sports, you get the third one free. We're gonna, if you're in three sports, you're gonna pay for three sports, if you're in four sports, you're gonna pay for four sports, and the logic in that is that, um, the cost of the referees and, um, the officials is going up, it's a huge amount. And, and not to begrudge them getting what they're getting, right, but we have to repeat that cost somewhere, so, uh, if they're in a sport, no matter how many sports they're in, they're still paying a coach, we're still paying officials, we're still paying uniforms, so um, there's no longer going to be a maximum on, um, activity participation. Uh, we went up by, um, twenty-five percent on the activity passes, and you can see those costs on there. Activity admissions, we went up again twenty-five percent, and every school around us is gonna have to do that, because the, um, officials and referees, that's statewide, it's, it's everybody, it's not just us, so people are gonna need to get sticker shock when they go to games everywhere, so. Let's see, what else do we do, driver's ed? You know, we've got cars that are a hundred thousand miles, so we're going to have to look at that, if we're gonna continue to offer driver's ed, there will be a purchase of a car, um, coming in, not be too long of a time.
If you wanna do the waiver, you can run that car as long as you want, you just won't qualify for the waiver.
Yeah. Well, or the fact that the cars, you know, have a lot of lines. Um, substitute pay will stay the same, um, yearbook, we were not recouping the cost of that, so we made sure that we're not funding yearbooks. Now, just trying to be super careful about, you know, what we're doing, and I realize it's, it's expensive, and it's expensive for families, and we don't wanna pass it on, but yet, it's we all know where we're at. That answer questions, I think, so that was.
No, like when, um, track has a traffic, and all these thirteen, fourteen teams come, who sets that cost? For them?
That's a basic question, I'm just doing Robin.
Roxanne and Robin, Tom Catherine through, yep.
Yep, and I know they increased that cost year. Is that the only sport where they pay participation, teams pay participation, wrestling?
Like the J D Y or J D I, I'm assuming they pay.
Championships or something like that.
Yeah, but regular games and stuff, it's not, it's just all tournaments and that, it needs. Yeah, I know they went up on the track ones this year a lot.
None at all. Yeah.
So, okay, I assume that we paid for a whole bunch of computers to get fixed?
Was that in Larry's report?
Yeah, I think so, or maybe it was just the bills.
Oh, it must have been bills, because Larry never participates in the games, I mean, yeah.
Explain that versus the insurance that we have. On that, or does that go back to the students, or why is the school paying some insurance?
Okay, so if they have insurance, then, you know, it covers except for they have a twenty-five dollar deductible, um, if they have one break and two breaks, because the kids that were, um, they, yeah, you kept data and, and, you know, that they have a higher deductible, so, then that all goes into a pot. And then the repairs are pulled from that pot, and actually, I don't know if I heard Larry say that they had a whole bunch of breaks this year.
I thought at our tech meeting. Were you there?
There, there.
I don't remember, we said.
There was also.
It wasn't a big time.
No, not a ton, and some of the breaks were just tiny.
Probably like it.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and our computers are getting, um, every year they're getting a little bit older, right, so we've got that on the horizon too, you know, in order to purchase, um, more computers, so we're trying to figure that out.
Larry had talked about going iPads, so.
Yeah, yeah, it was funny. I see, I see that happening, right, as our kids are used to those, you know, you like the computers, but.
Yeah, he said the operations are almost comparable, like a MacBook Air, like that, so.
And I don't think he had nearly as many breaks on the iPads as here with those new cases.
Yeah.
Frank?
It just wasn't even really talked about at our meeting this year.
Or in the past, it seems like we're always talking about how much money they were costing. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five B schedule, um, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Ms. Johnson, can you?
Uh, Sheila Nagel?
Yes.
Rhonda Day?
Yes.
Patty Carlson?
Yeah.
Ryan Sayer?
Yes.
Monica Heimberg?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Um, moving on to future meetings, our special board meeting Tuesday, July thirtieth at six P M for the levy approval, um, followed immediately by the annual retreat. Regular meeting Friday, August sixteenth at seven A M. Special meeting Friday, September twentieth at seven A M for the public tax levy hearing, followed by the regular meeting at seven thirty and finalizing the budget. Are there any other business?
I do have something, um, Madam President, um, for the banking, um, guidelines. Would you please ask for a motion to have yourself put on the, uh, financial, the three, four financial, financial institutions with signing rights?
So I'm looking for a motion to add myself, Monica Heimberg, to the four uh, depositories, uh, Starling Bank, Bank North, First Community Credit Union, and Edward Jones as a
Authorized signer.
As an authorized signer, do you have a motion for that? Uh, fire moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Day second, you want a roll call on that?
Yes, please. Brian Sayer? Rhonda Day?
Yes.
Patty Carlson?
Yeah.
Sheila Nagel?
Yes.
Monica Heimberg?
Yes.
Five, zero. Um, any other business?
Could we get, uh, those Mr. and Mrs. Jones set up for donations?
We don't know, we haven't talked here. Because we haven't really been in the office, kind of at the same time. And I was going, yes, it was gonna prove, and I was going to wait until this meeting, so we did have uh, our president from June on it, and then have to turn around and put a new president on it. So.
Rhonda, did you have something?
No, I was just wondering the same thing.
All right, if there's nothing else, I will declare the meeting adjourned at eight oh six P M.